Hello, Richard.
Hello, Chairman.
Okay. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, January 13th, 2021 meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners into session. This meeting is being held remotely as a result of an executive order issued on Thursday, March 12th, 2020 by Governor Baker. The auto suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter 30A, Section 20. That auto was effective immediately and until it's rescinded. The state of emergency is terminated. All that state of emergency is terminated. I'm going to call a roll. Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Stady.
I'm here, sir.
And the chairman is present, three to one. We have a motion to accept the minutes of the January 6th meeting.
Motion. I'll second.
Motion made in second to grant the minutes of the open session of January 6th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Number four, public comment. Is there anyone? Commissioner, Director Mullin spoke out to you about, have you heard of regarding public comment?
No, I have not heard from anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Number five, maintenance report and Corona update from John McGowan, Superintendent of Buildings.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have, I don't have too much to say about the capital improvement, but I got a few other things that I mentioned to you last week. I have a ductwork guy coming tomorrow to look in the Superior. As I mentioned to you about using the existing old ductwork for the vents for the, they were a coal fire. You know, when they used to have coal there, but they run throughout the building. And I'm just going to have him look at it and see if it's doable to incorporate new. They have new ways of extracting air and entering air into the building now. They don't need the ductwork. They could do it with high-volume hoses, which are flexible enough to go through all that ductwork. This is something I'm just looking into and getting an idea tomorrow. He's over in Brookline doing the ductwork there. So I told Mike to bring him here when he gets through there to come over and give us, give us an idea if it's, if we could do it. You know, to meet with the fresh air requirements for this COVID. Well, I'll let you, I'll keep you up to date on that and we'll see how that works out. We're in the process of, we've approved to have the sign painter come out and change the lettering on the signs in front of the registry and on the doorways, you know, changing, putting in your new positions of Commissioner Stady and yourself, Mr. Chairman. And Peter, we're just going to move you over. Your name's going to stay there. We're going to move you over one spot. But, and then add Michael Bellotti's name too. And I think we'll have it probably done hopefully by the end of the week. That, on that note, now the COVID. I've been dealing with, I know it's, I know you're probably saying, he's saying the same thing over and over again, but this is what's happening over and over again. We were back down in Stoughton Saturday. And I had it done, completely wiped down, everything wiped down all day Saturday. And as a precaution, I had it sprayed again Sunday. On Sunday, I got a call from Clerk of Courts at Superior, Walter, that some people in his building have come down with it. Come down with the COVID too. So we spent Sunday in there cleaning that and also spraying it and doing our usual procedure that we already do. I informed the, I informed Clerk of Courts that we did it Friday too. So it was done, all these buildings were done Friday too. Because that's a standard procedure that we do. We do it on Tuesday nights and we do it Friday nights. But we also were doing Brookline this Saturday. And we had an incident there where somebody come into the building and they reportedly come down with it on Sunday. So I had, it was only in one certain area on, in Brookline Court. It was in the first floor basement where the court offices usually work. So we were lucky there. He wasn't walking around the building because we did it all, we cleaned everything in the building. So I had it, it was Monday morning early. I had some guys go in there and disinfect that first floor again. And hopefully everything will work out all right there. They're in the process also, this weekend, Brighton Court is moving out of Brookline. And they're going back to Brighton Court, which was done over. And the judge requested that we go in there on Sunday after everybody's moved out of there Saturday. And, you know, do the COVID cleaning of the building again, because there'll be a lot of people in the building that we don't know, you know, and that she doesn't know, you know, the movement company, they, we want to take all the precautions we can for her people that are in her building too. And we're going to do it again Saturday and Sunday. Now, Saturday we'll be there. I'll have guys here that are with the movers and then Sunday, hopefully they'll be done Sunday and then I'll have the guys disinfect everything and wipe everything down. And that was this week. And we're dealing with every, it seems like it's every, every other day. You can ask the director because he gets the calls and I get the calls. And we've been pretty busy taking care of this stuff. But other than that, we'll just keep going along what we're doing. It seems to be working. And that's about it. If you have any questions, I'm more than glad to answer you, if I can.
Commissioner Collins, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, John. I just wanted to thank you and your team for working so hard because I know this is always on your mind. It's, you know, it's every day. So I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stady.
Yes, thank you. I echo what Commissioner Collins said. Thank you, John, for you and your staff for doing a good job and keeping up with what seems an insurmountable problem. But it points to our ongoing efforts to address it in the county. And we need to make sure we're all on the same page moving forward in terms of dealing with COVID. So thank you for your effort and keep it up. And don't leave Peter Collins out. Whatever you do, don't leave Peter out there. Leave him on that side. He's earned it.
Okay. And the lettering is going to be the same size too.
Oh, good. Okay. That's good. That's great.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. Appointments, we have none. Do we have any old business, Mr. Director?
No, we don't. We don't have any this week.
Thank you. Number eight, personnel matters. We have one personnel matter. The contingent employment for a substitute instructor effective 1/14/21. We have a motion at the agricultural school.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll and expense warrants.
Do you want me to read those, Joe?
Yes, please.
All right. So there are three different warrants. I'm going to read them all as one. Motion to approve county payroll 21-28 in the amount of $137,166.35. County bi-weekly payroll 21-28 in the amount of $326,880.20. And county expense warrant of 1221 in the amount of $58,082.27.
Yeah, I'll second. A question?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, just not to be picky, but I want to make sure we're doing it legal. On the last one that Commissioner Collins read, the voucher reflects past Chairman O'Brien. Do we need to correct that before we vote it or amend it? Or how does that, as far as the legality of it, it had his name on it, I noticed. Does that need to be something corrected, amended?
You mean the expense warrant for $58,082?
Yeah, I caught that. Was that, you know, I've just, it can be, I can abstain or, you know, abstain on that one or I don't, what the technicality is.
No, Dick, you're doing it fine. So we've made this motion and it's been seconded. If we vote it, we can ask Mike to have the name signed in later or stamped in later, but it should read the chairman with Joe. It should, this form should just be corrected. That's all.
Okay. Whoever, the form needs to be updated. That's all. Okay. That's fine. All right. I'll second the motion with that stipulation that the director make the appropriate changes to make sure it's legal. That's all. That's fine. Yep. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. All in favor of the payroll and expense warrants as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number 10, we have no bid openings today. Number 11, we have no contract awards today. Number 12, solar project update relating to property on the premise of the Norfolk County Agricultural School, 400 Main Street, Walpole. And 1377 North Street, Walpole, Mass. We have a number of folks, I believe, that are interested in this. We're going to start it off with the vendor. And I think he's here, Andrew. Is Andrew with us? Andrew Bernstein from Kierzaj Energy?
Yes, he's with us, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like you to start, Mr. Bernstein.
Sure. Let me share my screen. I just have a brief PowerPoint update. If I can get it to come up. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes.
So I've just got a few short slides with an update where we stand. So in terms of what's been completed so far, we have four small roofs and the canopy are mechanically complete at the Aggie School. So you've got building five, and these are very small roofs due to structural issues as well as just size and exposure. Number five, Avery Hall is 34. DC Watts, DC. Building six is the Animal Science 94. Building seven, the Horse Barn 94. Building eight is Cohen Hall. So it's 378. And then the car park. So the car park is completed. The only next steps is we're waiting for the utility to come and install the meters and eventually turn us on. The savings should start to flow in February. Once again, it's, they're small, so there's not a lot. And Kierzaj is part of our work is going to fix the grading at the end of the parking lot here. And then we'll do some landscaping and bring to add on the side where some of the trees were taken down. So that's a good story and got this done in record time thanks to the cooperation of the Aggie School, Ritz Fitzpatrick and his team, as well as the town of Walpole in helping us out with permitting and the other issues. So there's the two ground mounts. We've had man, much discussion on Fisher Street. The progression is that we've been getting a lot of feedback over the last four months from butters, neighbors, citizens, school students, teachers, administrators, so complete, and as well as the commissioners, of course. So the original location was here and this had been moved three times. When you do a solar project, as many know, you have to be aware of all the permitting issues and there's wetlands here, which we need to stay away from. So originally, we were looking at this and then there were some trails and this is an important area to the Aggie School that we were unaware of in terms of hayrides and Halloween rides and all sorts of good things and learning. And even though they had suffered a lot of tree loss, there was a lot of feedback. Okay. Anyhow, so there are a couple others we had looked at. One of them was right here. So we started developing this one. There's other issues, of course, in terms of the interconnection, which we had already worked on for two and a half years with Eversource, which we can't change. So we had to be using this interconnection. So we had a preliminary analysis here and I won't spend too much time. But there are some key approaches to this. This is a hayfield. And moving it here, we would have no tree clearing. However, this is a hayfield. It's important to the Aggie School. And they didn't want to see that happen. So we worked on that. I'll go into what we've come up with. One of the things they asked us to do is part of it is could we clean up? They have basically a dump with cement and tree stumps and all sorts of things here that they really wanted to clean up. They wanted to have pollinator plantings around this whole area. We offered that we'll even pay the Aggie School if they want to send sheep in, which we do at other solar projects for vegetative management. The minimum distance, the boundary was 65 feet. This would be, this would be the, where the fence would be around that facility. This, even with this project, it has very positive carbon sequestration annually equivalent to saving 300 acres. And it also prevents the equivalent of about 2,000 tons of CO2 released into the atmosphere. So you've got very nice story here. However, we worked with the teacher. We went back out there a couple of weeks ago and we walked the site with about 16 teachers and Rick Fitzpatrick and Tammy Quinn and some of the board directors, Ed Little, and they really wanted to preserve this field. So we had prevented, we had presented rather another site, another option, moving it down here. And working with them, we still clean up some of the area here. But they really wanted us to see if they could push even more because they wanted to preserve this whole field. So, and the minimum distance boundary in this case is 80 feet. This retains six and a half acres of the pasture. The pasture is about eight and three quarters. Had about two and a half acres of clearing versus seven acres, which was the original one. So where we ended up is we pushed it down even further on the site. There'll be more clearing here. However, working with the teachers who are responsible for forestry and a couple of other areas, this area has trees that are already coming down because of their age. So they felt this would be something positive. The Aggie School would work with us. We still have a natural vegetative border here for neighbors. One concern is we have to understand what the wetlands are here to make sure that we're staying far enough away from the wetlands. So we have to get a flagging to better understand that. But this is where we stand right now and the teachers, everyone was great and it was a very positive group where everyone said, look, we all need to make compromises. And Kierzaj makes compromises, the county and the Aggie School and students and teachers. If need be, even though there still will be vegetative screening here, we might put some screening down on this side. This is on top of the hill just so that none of the neighbors would be affected. So this is where we've come out here. We'll still maintain, it might be a little smaller, but we'll still maintain the benefits that have already been agreed to with a letter of intent to the Aggie and the Board of Commissioners. So that's the upstate on Fisher Street, Hilltop or North Street. Dick Stady had asked me to summarize where we've come here and try to put this out there with many of the variations we've been working on for, I'm afraid, the last almost three years. What's interesting on this is there's two areas, rather two ways you can evaluate the size of these projects. One is what's called DC. We're paying the county tied to AC. And this is the summary. So the latest one, which I will show you the layout of that. We're down fairly significantly from the original size that we started. However, Kierzaj is going to maintain pretty much the same size in terms of rent and we're just going to take a hit on that for the county. So we're only going from 5 to 4.5, even though we reduced the DC from 7 to 5.7. For a solar project, what you really care about is DC because that is tied to production or output. Approximate fenced areas, we've reduced this by acres. Approximate tree clearing, we're at 5.3, then we were at 3, and then we were at half an acre. Now we're at 1.2, but as you'll see, most of the clearing is stumps. We've stayed away from the mature trees. Then another major positive is the CO2 sequestration, which is equivalent annually to saving 6,000 acres of forest. And this is all EPA has in sight. So these are numbers out there. Importantly, we're 120 feet from the southern boundary. So we're staying away as much as possible. And you'll see on the different layouts that there's no tree cutting on the southern side. So the existing vegetative screening will stay there. So I don't know how much, I can go into more in details, but I know we're limited on time. But this was one of the original layouts here and taking into the field. Once again, we brought in engineers to make sure of the sight line. This was a nice layout because you're on top of the crest of the hill going down. So we had engineers, Bowler, an engineering firm, help us on the sight lines to understand that. And then we were going to come up with pushing it down here a little bit more. We got some feedback about the trees, that that was a problem, that we were doing about two and a half acres down here of clearing for the most part. So then we came up with an alternative layout. This one was pushing it up a little bit more here in terms of the array, saving, subtracting this whole area here. We got some feedback from the Aggie as well as the commissioners, as well as other stakeholders, that they didn't want to see this up there, that they'd rather minimize. This directly affects the rent, as I said, and the size. So we worked on what we could do about this. The sequestration is still quite strong and we're still maintaining we're away from this vegetative south border. So where we've ended up is we took out this whole portion here. We made it smaller. We subtracted taking down any of the trees here. The only trees that'll be taken down are actually within the array itself. There's a clump here, a clump here. This is a very steep slope. So I would put a warning on that it might get a little bit smaller. Once we have the engineers, we start looking this out because of viability. But we think that we're quite confident that this will be a great layout that works for everyone. We'll put the screening on that we've always had here. There's no need for screening up here. And the minimum distance, the panels, the southern border here is 120 feet. So we haven't encroached on that at all. And depending on, this is with Google Earth, it might be plus or minus a little bit more than that, 125. And I think that's the summary. So it's 1.2 acres of clearing and trimming. We minimized most of the clearing and avoided all the trails. And this is something that we think would be a great benefit and within, fits in within the existing appraisal and everything that we've done to date. So that's the quick summary.
Thank you. Commissioners. Commissioner Collins, do you have any questions today?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, thank you for your presentation and for taking time to meet and discuss with me. I know we have a big agenda, but I got a couple of quick comments. I think you're trending the right way. I like the options you've gave us for Fisher in terms of working with the staff and with the faculty and other people in terms of moving it. And I like that design in terms of the last alternative. I'm just a little concerned still with the hilltop because I thought, and I could be wrong, but I thought I had indicated I was hoping for a little bit more of a buffer on the southern boundary. I thought we had talked about 150 feet. Now, you did say that perhaps that might end up being that way, but your plan shows 120. Am I correct? Didn't I mention 120?
We looked back and moved at that and right now we, that would take out significant amounts. And until we find out on the slopes here, something we certainly will look at. But I don't believe we can move too much further back because of the slopes.
Okay.
We had spoken about that. We looked at it, but I think it's going to be very challenging to get more than 120, maybe 125.
Well, if possible, I'd like you to suck it away as something to look at because I would, I'd like to see an increased buffer if possible. That's all. I know you're trying to balance the concern for the hay and of course making your energy viability as well. Now, you mentioned you're going to have a buffer area or a berm. Is that just going to be on the area indicating, is it going to be a berm all the way up or just in that area there?
Just here and it's going to be vegetative screening.
Okay.
Down there. You don't need it here with the topographic layout. And as I think you and I discussed, using Bowler, you're several hundred feet from the road up here as well. And it's going, it's sloping down here.
Andrew, what's the why, what's the largest distance away when you take the point of the most north? What's that about? 250 away from the street or 220?
I think it's, I think it's even higher than that. I think it's 290.
Okay. All right. And cross pollination, you're going to be using that?
Oh, right. Right. We'll use cross, we'll use cross pollination seeding as well.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I wish I could say to you, I'd like to see this a little smaller. I would. I think you tried to do the best you could with what you have. And I know we're still just, you know, starting the whole process. We've got a way to go. But thank you. Thank you for answering my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner, Director Mullin, do you have any questions today?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Chairman. I think we wanted this really to be an update for the Commissioners and the public about where we were and all the adjustments that really continued to take place. Especially based on the Commissioners' feedback, all the public feedback that we're hearing and the feedback from all involved. And I think, you know, I mean, I think what you have seen and what we have been seeing from Kierzaj in terms of, you know, I mean, their ability to work with us, to help us really reflect the feedback is a very, very positive thing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay. More to follow. I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is number 13, and it's a update on the operating budget and budget process for fiscal year 2022. Director Mullin.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually, if it's okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop. Excuse me. I'm gonna stop the screen sharing. Andrew's screen. And I'm going to share my screen if you can bear with me for one moment. I just had to figure out how to work the computer. All right. We, you have in your packet a proposed schedule for the county's FY 2022 budget. And that, in the schedule, we actually are looking, evaluating how everything has worked in the past and trying, are complying to build on our future. We have made a few changes that I wanted just, I'm actually quickly walk through. But what we're hoping is that tomorrow we will begin the FY 22 budget process officially. And we will distribute the budget process as well as our budget, as well as our budget memos to all the county departments. Over the next roughly three and a half weeks, which is exactly the same amount of time as last year. We would ask individual, we would ask individual county departments to fill in all their budget proposals in our county budget spreadsheet. Then actually, one of the things that, oh, like actually we are proposing a little different because we would start budget hearings a week earlier this year. And we would start them on February 24th, which is a Wednesday. And we would begin actually the budget hearings with, with the county, with the county elected department heads. And that would be with the Register of Deeds, that would be with the county treasurer. And additionally, based on the size of the maintenance budget, it would be with the maintenance as well. And then that, oh, you know, and then that would provide more greater opportunity to really have a conversation and a discussion about about, about individual, individual departmental budgets. You know, I mean, one of the things in evaluating, looking back, I think I've noticed is trying to, is trying to cram in $31 million of budget reviews in two weeks. It becomes a little difficult. And we really want this to be a process and to have really authentic, oh, you know, like in real conversations with our department heads. So that would take us, as I mentioned, it would start on the 24th of February. It would continue on into Wednesday, March 3rd, and then to the 10th, the 10th of March as well. And then over the next, like, two weeks, that would actually give all of us really based on all the budget submissions and based on the feedback that we have heard and had taken place as part of the budget reviews. It would really, it would give us really about two weeks really to put everything together. As well as align at the same time every year, we actually learn and get an idea actually through the vote of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, what our health insurance rates are going to be for the following fiscal year as well. And that is one of really traditionally the last pieces of the budget that we typically get around the first or second week of March. And then we can finalize that. We can finalize our indirect process and then be able to have the commissioner's public, excuse me, the commissioner's public hearing on the FY 22 budget on Wednesday, the 24th of March. And you'll see one, like, I can propose, in proposing the schedule, this is one of the things that I'm proposing really to change. In the past, we have had a public hearing, you know, the commissioner's vote on the following fiscal year budget on the same day. And really evaluating where we are and where we want to continue to go. It's really, in my view, it's not really a best practice in order to actually ask for feedback in one breath or one agenda item. And then in, and then in a following agenda item, have a vote on everything you just heard. And this would give us a little more time. Oh, you know, if we do, if we do receive any feedback on, oh, you know, on the commissioner's budget or where we are as part of, or where we are as part of the process at that point. We will have a little more time to be able to reflect any feedback if we're able to. Like in the final, like in the final commissioner's budget, which would then be voted according to this, according to this our calendar and schedule on the 31st of March. And then right after the 30, right after the commissioner's vote on the 31st, there would be a FinCEN, and the FinCEN will continue to meet. I actually should have included this as well. But as of right now, the FinCEN is meeting as part of their calendar. They're meeting on the 27th of this month, on the 27th of January. Then they'll be meeting on the 24th of February. And then, and then they will meet to receive the budget, the commissioner's recommended budget on the 31st of March as well. But at that point also, it's not really going to be a secret where we're heading, where we're trending, like where we're projecting our expenses and revenues really to be at that point as well. And we're trying to really have everyone on the same page and having the same expectations. That would take us, as I mentioned, to the 31st with another FinCEN meeting on the 7th of April. That would bring us to the advisory board public hearing that is scheduled on the 14th of April. And then, and then between the public hearing and the final vote on the FY 22 budget, that would give us actually just over a month. And I mentioned, I mentioned a calendar in terms of when the budget, you know, when we're proposing and when we want to reach out to our elected county officials. I'm into our, I'm into our department's head. But here, what, here's what I'm initially envisioning as a schedule. On the 24th of February, we would begin, we would begin the budget review hearings with the registry of deeds, with the treasurer's office and with maintenance. Then on Wednesday, the 3rd, we would meet with, or the commissioners would meet with the engineering department with a golf course, with the agricultural high school trustees. And then finally, on the 10th of March, the commissioners, as part of their regular Wednesday meetings, would, would meet to consider the commissioner's office budget, the RSP, the RSPP and the IT budget as well, as well as our miscellaneous budget as well. And I should add, as you know, the miscellaneous budget, like it's really important because that is a budget that includes our health insurance and includes our retirement and pension obligations as well. And as I mentioned earlier, those are two very big ticket items. So like at this point, you know, I mean, we're at the beginning of the FY 22 planning process. I think a lot of the work that was done as part of the FY 21 process, in my view, it put us in a more, like in a more positive and a sustainable place heading into '22. But I mean, and just the initial projections and the estimates we're looking at. You know, I mean, it's not going to be rosy. We don't in any way, shape or form have a rosy picture financially as a county. And there are going to be additional challenges that we are going to need to address in FY 22 as well. So that's where we are. But I really wanted to provide a really, like a really holistic and comprehensive outline on where we've been, where we are and how we're seeking to go forward as part of the FY 22 budget process. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to discuss that.
Commissioner Collins.
I'm all set. Good job, Mike.
Commissioner, Commissioner Stady?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mike, two things. Are we going to be putting out guidelines to the department heads in terms of level funding or 2% increase? That's number one. I commend you, by the way, for the schedule. I think it's a great, great move to give us time to have a separate vote, as you said. The other thing is, are you anticipating that these hearings will be part of our regular commissioner meeting? Or do we have like a second meeting on top of the regular meeting? Just asking for scheduling. How do you envision that?
Yes, that's a really good question, and thank you, Commissioner. Historically, the budget review meetings have taken place as part of the weekly Wednesday meetings.
I see. Okay, okay.
But that's what we wanted. I mean, we, as you know, we have regular business we need to do as well. Every weekend, that's one of the other reasons why I had hoped to break it up a little more. You know, I mean, you're just really to have more genuine conversations about all the budgets. Like in terms of your first question, oh, you know, like in terms of the framework, what, like what, what we have traditionally done as a county, I mean, obviously in terms of the pay scales, in terms of the cost of living and the collective bargaining agreements that we have in FY 22 on the county side, those are already settled. And we are planning on the county side for, for two and a quarter. Your cost of living increases for both union and non-union employees. I mean, and I think, like, it is expected and inherent when the departments, when the county departments, they submit all their budgets, it follows in line with what has already been approved in terms of a cost of living and following our collective bargaining agreements. However, especially where we are now in our budget, I mean, we also want departments to be able to propose, you know, what they think they need as well. And we have limitations, as we know, like and we have mandates, and we have mandates that we need to follow as well. And I would ask that when departments, you know, submit their budgets, that they submit budgets, you know, based on what they believe as they need, like as the experts and they, like in the heads of their respective departments. But however, like also something that fits into the existing mandate and limitation and revenue limitations as well that we have as a county. But I think, you know, I mean, that will allow for like a full conversation with the county commissioners. And then based on whether or not, like what has been proposed actually fits in with what we can afford as a county. And where the county commissioners want to go, we, you know, I expect and I really hope we have those conversations as part of the budget review hearings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question, Mr. Director.
Yes.
Last year, we had some questions about availability of the budget to the public.
Yep.
I know we've talked about it internally. And I know we've, can you explain what we've talked about and how we can better make this more presentable and easily accessible to, to the public, to anyone that wants to see our budget? And what, what improvements we're going to attempt to make this year?
Yes, I'd be happy. I mean, that's a really good question. And I will, if I could share my screen again, and I will go back. Hold on. I'm holding. If you just bear with me. Like, I swear to God, I am proficient in technology. Hold on. Bear with me. This is it. Yep. Hold on a second. I'm sorry. Oh, here we go. Okay. Yes, as you mentioned, like we really, in my view, like we really moved forward last year in our budget process. You know, like in utilizing technology, like in our county website, on our county website to share information about what had been proposed, like and where we are, like and where we were at that time in the budget process. If you go to our homepage, on the bottom of our homepage, you will see, actually, we have all the information. We've been keeping everyone updated about the solar project and all the notices we have had to post as well. And then at the bottom right here, like you will see that we have a budget portal. And this was for fiscal year '21 operating budget. And then all the documentation relating to our final budget recommendation. In terms of the budget that had been at that time approved by our advisory board, all that information, all that information was there as well as the way in the, in the information actually at that time from our county attorney, as well as a FinCEN recommendation and the, like any information and the recommendations like from all of our departments as well. Moving through, like in moving into the FY 22 budget process, I actually plan on, oh, you know, like I'm envisioning really doing the same thing. It gets all the information out there, gets really our revenues out there, our available revenues, any limitations that we have. It gets all the information out there for our departments, for the public, of our local communities as well. And as we go forward into FY 22, it's exactly what I expect to continue doing as we move further into the process.
Okay, thank you. So that is new.
All these efforts, they begin as, they begin last March, actually, and they will update it along the way.
Okay, with continually to look at it.
Yes.
Yep. I mean, we haul, we haul a copy of the budget around with us in our bag, but it's impossible to, plusy with the changes, it's impossible to keep, you know, producing them. And they're not available that easily out on the street, but if we can get it on the web, it'll help.
Yes, and if I could add one thing, I just really want to provide, like actually, like appropriate context. I mean,
Right.
From, from the 9th of February, probably to the end of March, our budget, our budget document will be a work in progress. And when we have all the departmental submissions, around the 9th, we will then include them, I can upload them on the website. But that doesn't mean that every, like every update that we make between the 9th of February, you know, the end of March is going to be posted. I mean, we need to be able, to compensate and be able to adjust as we go forward. But I mean, in terms of what, when we have a budget and when we have revenues that, oh, you know, I believe are going to be ready, and the commissioners, like actually at that time, at that time, believe are ready to be updated, we can do that accordingly as well.
Understood. Okay. Okay, on the budget process, do I have a motion to accept the current budget schedule as presented by Director Mullen today?
I'm still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. So we're going to go forward with this calendar. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Number 14. Report of the county director.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen. Hold on a sec, once more, if that's okay. We do have this month's registry revenues that we received, I believe, on Monday. And I just want to walk through them and share them with you and the general public as well. You know, as we, I have talked about actually for the last six months now, I can even apply to that, especially in COVID, the registry continues really to be extremely busy. And our revenues, and the registry revenues as part of our budget and as part of our projected revenues and what we collect, really continue to show that. As part of our FY 21 projections, you will see that the, that the December share, of those projections that we were planning for and hoping for was $191,000. And the total recording fees, like in the land court fees that were taken at the registry in the month of December was $358,000. So that, oh, you know, those fees actually came in very higher than projections. And if you can hold on, we have actually one of, I think we should be good now. But then, like you can see really the same thing, if not better, and actually better on the de-decise fees, of the 100% of the de-decise fees, we had projected as part of our breakdown $311,000. And the de-decise and the de-decise fees that came in and what collected were actually almost $649,000. So all total, we, at this point in time, about $725,000 over projection in the recording fee revenues. And then, like actually, $1.1 million over projecting. And then, like actually, $1.1 million over projection, like in the de-decise revenues for the, for the 100% of the de-decise revenues. And you will see, like in the online fees, that we're trending a little below where we should be. But, oh, you know, I mean, it's relatively slow, but it's relatively in the ballpark. But again, it's, as we go forward into FY22, like, I mean, we look at the, at the prior year revenues, we look at the current year revenues, can we try to make, oh, you know, like a rational judgment of where they'd be? However, even though we are very well ahead, like in our initial projections, you know, I mean, I do think this year might be a very, very unique year. And, and as we move forward in the FY22 budget process because of that, you know, I mean, I think it would create like a huge issue, and, oh, you know, and a real challenge if we were to actually adjust our revenues, like actually based on what, you know, we have seen this year. Like, I really do think this is a very, very unique year, in terms of the refinance market, like in terms of the different types of, in terms of the different types of choices and decisions that families and homeowners are making as part of the pandemic. And I would just, like, I would just, like, I would just, like, actually outline the fact that, oh, you know, I mean, I would be very cautious about actually using these revenues to try to project where we're going in terms of the next fiscal year and further forward. So that is all I have on the registry revenues. Is there any other questions? I do have a few, I do have a few updates, but I just want, I just want to, I just want to open up any questions on that.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, like in a few other things, like as the public, and as I think, like all of us have seen in the ledger, that Quincy District Court has closed, like it has been closed, and has been closed by the trial court today for deep cleaning. Like, again, I want to thank John McGowan and his whole crew. We heard from the trial court actually last night, you know, and our maintenance crew, they had an extremely quick response. And they've been, and they've been, and they've been all, and they have been there all day today. Like, our work and our efforts with the Abrahams Group is continuing in full swing. And their focus, wait, and their focus right now is benchmarking. I can bench, I can determine benchmarking between Norfolk County, as well as Bristol County and Plymouth County. In the Abrahams Group, over the last, over the last two to three weeks, they've been meeting individually with departments, like in hopes and in planning to help us really develop a capital plan. And that is, like, very exciting. Like, in a few months, hopefully, we're going to have one holistic plan that we can use going forward. Also, as a follow-up to the Commissioners' approval of the FY19 audit, actually last week, we have been circulating a representation letter. And at this, and at this point, we're waiting for the Registry of Deeds to sign the representation letter. But after that, like, we should be able to finalize that. And then we can get the information over to Moody's, like in the credit rating, and the credit rating agencies, like in the other entities, you know, that we need to in order to go forward. And I do have a very, a very good update as well. We've been working with A and F on the kids' act reimbursement, you know, on the $250,000 submission that we submitted in November, and that was appropriated by the Advisory Board for spending in December, actually contingent on the receipt of the funding. And I, and I do believe we're going to be receiving that by Monday, by Monday, the 18th, I believe. And that is very good news as well. And I want to thank A and F, it's, it's been, it's really been a partnership in working with them, like in a number of state agencies as part of, you know, the whole pandemic and the kids' process, Mr. Chairman. With that, that is all I have. I think I talked enough this week.
Thank you. On our bud, on our agenda, you'll see item number 15. Notice it was in there last week too, and this, I think, is a new category. The Director and I spoke, and we decided to add it. Doesn't mean we have to use it, but Commissioners, it's for a period at the, towards the end of the meeting. And I, we do have an executive session today for the Commissioners to bring up any other comments they want on any other subject. So I'm just going to ask if the Commissioners have any other subjects they'd like to bring up before we go into executive session. And I intend to leave it on there, and if we don't use it, we don't use it. But it's, it's, we can go right by it. But other weeks, if we need to use it, we can invoke it and use it. That's all.
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'll just jump in real quick. I'm just going to say two things. Number one, on the budget process, respectfully urge Mike to get that out to all the department heads ASAP, so that they can't say they didn't know about it and they can start planning. And on that, on the budget, are we going to include also, for example, a separate request for what might be looked at as capital items, or is that included in the budget? And then we break it out later. Because I know we've talked about, during the campaign, and even in terms of in lieu of that report coming out, we should be looking at capital planning. So is that something that we want to have the department heads look at, what they could look at? You know, they may say, in terms of my building or maintenance, we might need a new truck, or I could use a new, you know, something, whether, and would that be something we want to include in the budget and then break it out as a capital item? That's my question. Thank you.
Yeah, like one of the issues, like in my opinion, which, which again, in my opinion, really led to how this whole process we're going through with the Abrahams Group was a fact, like in years past, we included the capital budget, like in our operational budget. And like, in my view, in my experience, that isn't a best practice. Like, we have recurring revenues, like every year, like those revenues really should be used, like a large part for operational needs. Like, however, what we're doing and what we're working on, like as, like as part of our work with the Abrahams Group, like is to develop the separate capital planning process. And that's why the Abrahams Group, you know, actually beginning at two or three weeks ago, they've been in touch, and they've been working with every department to develop, like actually like a short-term and long-term capital plan. And then we can, like, actually use that information and develop, like actually like an annual capital plan based on our revenues, based on our free cash flow, unexpendable balance. I can go from there, but that will be a more sustainable model. Like, and, you know, like, and, like, and, like, and it will be a model that will allow us to focus on operations as well. And if we have a big ticket item, you know, that we need to work on, we won't be actually stressing, or strangling out our regular, our regular, our operational needs. But all of our departments, yeah, they know that. Like, and actually in the memo that we have ready to go out, it does specify that we only want departments to identify in their budget, any operational equipment that they recommend is necessary. Like, we want to like separate out completely the capital.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Collins?
I'm set.
Okay, we don't have anything, any emergency items or items we didn't anticipate. Director Mullin?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. We're going to go into executive session, please.
I'll make the motion pursuant to purpose three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically ASME Council 93, Local 2417 Registry, Engineering and Maintenance Units. If the Chair declares that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Commissioners, the Commissioners will return to open session solely for the purpose of adjournment.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think I do.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, we, you want to do it as a roll call, Joe?
Oh, yes, I forget.
It's okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Stady?
Yes.
And Commissioner Shaver votes yes on executive session. I might add that our Labor Council will be with us, and we've also invited Registry of Deeds Bill O'Donnell. So if everyone else can take leave here.
Yeah, like on that note, Chairman, if you could declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the county?
I do declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect. Okay, thank you. We're going to go into executive session.
I'm going to step up for a second, but just start with that, man. Be right back.
We are out of executive session. Now I need a motion to adjourn the regular, regular meeting of January.
Before we do, Mr. Chairman, I thought that was a good meeting. Wait, that was, we made a lot of progress today. I thought it was good. I'll move it.
Okay, move it. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned. I'll see you Friday for sure, if not before.
No, no, no. See you tonight at 6:00.
Oh, that's right. How can I forget?
Is it 5:00?
Friday, tonight at 6:00, and then Friday. Okay.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Tonight at 6:00.
Right.
Then Friday at...
What time's Friday?
3:30, the trustees.
No, no, the Commissioner meeting.
At 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, and then 3:30.
No, tonight is 6:00.
All right.
On Friday, we have it, on Friday, we have a county commissioner at 10:00, and then we have an aggie at 4:00.
Early morning special. Bring your bagels. Okay.
Okay. They say.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Bye.